Good evening, everybody. Going to go ahead and call to order the Bristol, Virginia City Council for today, April 25th, 2023. Please join me in observing a moment of silence. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Well, good evening, everybody. Glad to see a pretty good crowd here tonight. I know we've had some good weather recently, so I hope everybody's been out enjoying it and getting downtown and, you know, just be mindful of, you know, children out playing in the, playing in the street, playing in their yards, and people riding motorcycles, so keep an eye out for those and enjoy the beautiful weather we're coming into. I'm going to go ahead and open it up to council comments.
I'd like to just mention to everyone as a reminder, because it has been published in some other means, but not by the city council. May the 4th is the date set aside and recognized by the federal government as the National Day of Prayer. There will be a recognition program and time of prayer at Cumberland Square Park on May the 4th at noon. This will be likely, I'm not sure if, is Pastor Hauck managing it at this time?
I don't believe so.
Not this time? We, it may be a good time to thank Pastor Hauck for his historic time of providing the service of managing that program where he's done so for many years, and he is retiring, at least as the senior pastor, I'm not sure on all the details. But that, the National Day of Prayer will be May the 4th, and there will be a program at Cumberland Square Park at noon. And it may not be a city event, but I would like, just on my own behalf, to invite anyone who would like to attend.
All right, thank you. Any other council comments? City manager's comments?
No comments.
All right. We'll move on to matters to be presented by members of the public for non-agenda items. First person who signed up for non-agenda item is Crystal Biggs. And as you're coming up, I'll just remind everybody, if you haven't, I know you have, but if you haven't done it before, state your name, where you're from. When the light comes on, you have three minutes. Yellow light comes on is 10 seconds, and red light comes on is, time is up. We'll have a maximum of 30 minutes, so three minutes apiece. So, go ahead. Thank you.
My name is Crystal Biggs, and I live with my young daughters and husband in a community off of Randolph Street. We attend school, work in, and pay taxes with Bristol, Virginia as well. I know that it is still a pending matter with people trying to introduce the Comstock Act, and I just want to stand up here again and let you all know how important it is to me that that does not get passed. And I would love to tell you about my personal abortion story and how it made me as passionately pro-choice as I am today, but the fact of the matter is that I do not have one. I do not need one. I do not need to be faced with a scenario or have someone close to me encounter a situation to see that an opportunity needs to be there for those who have different lives than myself. I do not need a college education to understand that when people stand here and spout things that are untrue about how pregnancies develop, they can be easily disproven by simple research or even during my time in eighth grade science when we studied cell reproduction. I do not need to be on Warfarin to understand that if I am to get pregnant on this medication, I must stop and risk blood clots or continue and give birth to a child with severe birth defects. I do not need to be in an abusive relationship to understand that some women fear bringing a life into this world to endure what they experience. I do not need to have a wanted pregnancy expire inside of me to know that if the pregnancy does not pass on its own, I may need Sidetech to expel the no longer growing fetus. I do not need to be told my pregnancy is high risk to my life to understand why someone would want to terminate for fear of leaving her other kids without a mother. I do not need to be homeless in order to understand the crippling fear of bringing a child into this world and not being able to provide them shelter or to understand how many people already view the homeless as a scourge upon our community. I do not need to be an addict to understand that some people are unable to make the decision to stop using their drug of choice for the duration of a pregnancy and do not want to bring an addicted baby into this world to suffer. I do not need to be pregnant from sexual assault to understand that it can make people want to end their life and/or fear of having the rapist keep themselves in the life of the child. I do not need to be faced with my pre-teen or teenage daughter being pregnant and wanting to terminate for any reason to know that I would do whatever it takes to ensure that my living, breathing child does not have to remain pregnant if she does not want to be. I do not need to know anyone's situation to understand that abortion is needed healthcare for many, even if I would not make the same choice in that position. I do know for a fact that those who are in need of abortion services, for whatever reason, do have a heartbeat with a fully formed heart and a brain with developed brainwaves to assist in their choices for their own life. Please do not take the opinions of those who are unable to see a viewpoint other than their own and make it as a law that will hurt the living, breathing people in our communities in more ways than any of us can know.
Thank you very much. All right. Next person for non-agenda item is Reverend Knopfler.
I'm Jackie Knopfler. I live at 143 MacArthur Circle in Bristol, Virginia. Mr. Mayor, to the other council members, I wanted to ask the question, I know that we're not allowed to speak, but I'd like to ask the city manager and perhaps one of you. What happened to the promise at the, about the landfill when they did, when the engineers said that they would give some type of warning or something of that nature when the gases and things would be released? At Exit 7 where I live, right off Bottom Row, a couple of nights, you know, have been kind of horrific. And it brought back the promise that, that they did make that promise that they will find a way to contact it. I went on site to look at the site to see if there was something to say, this is what we're doing to the wall today, or the week, which may release some gases, or this is what we're doing, or, or whatever that nature is. Now, that's what caused, you know, confusion in the community and anger, more so on top of what we were having to deal with and, you know, words being crossed over, you know, that normally wouldn't be said in time like this. I think that the engineers need to keep their word and their promise, or, and I think we really need to at least let the community know what is going on at the landfill when the gas is due release like that. And I mean, they actually made it to my home again, and it was horrific. So please, please address that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to the city manager if you want to address that.
Yeah, on April 14th, we did post an update that there were continuing to drill the non-perimeter gas wells throughout the system. So that was, that was posted on April 14th at 12:00 PM, and then that's been the case ever since then. So we have, you know, we have tried to notify the public that we are drilling, we're continuing to drill, we'll be continuing to drill probably through, I'm going to say through the second week of June. So there will be drilling that will be ongoing.
But was that the only time it was released, that it was on the webpage?
No, I think we've put it on there a couple of times that we would start drilling, because we started drilling back in March, if I'm not mistaken. So we have, we have put it on the website out there that we would be drilling and that there could be emissions. For everybody in here, those gas wells, as we drill them every night, they are covered. So it's not like they're completely open and fumes are spewing out. I don't, I'm not sure what the weather was here this weekend, I was out of town, but you know, if it's, if it's cold, if it's rainy, typically that's when you notice more of the gas odors than you do any other time. So just, I'm not exactly sure what else we can say, except that we will be drilling through probably the second week of June.
Okay, so the drilling is key.
The drilling.
You drill it, that means it's going to release the gas?
No, it doesn't necessarily mean we're releasing gas. What it means is we're drilling into the landfill waste mass, and there's a potential for gases to escape, but those gas wells are capped every single night. So.
And correct me if I'm wrong, I believe the drilling is Monday through Saturday, 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM?
Yes, depending on the weather.
If the weather allows.
Yes.
I hope they're actually starting at 7:00 AM.
Can I suggest something real quick? Just real quick here.
We have a lot of people here in the city that doesn't use the computer, don't know how to check the website out. But everybody has a cellphone. Everybody in this room, hold up your hand, you got a cellphone. Correct? They can have an Amber Alert or the school system can get, I'll give you my phone number, I'm sure you've got pretty much everybody. It can have an alert system, let you know if something's happening. That's all I had to suggest right there.
You can sign up for Code Red. We, the city does have a system called Code Red, and you can sign up for that system, and it's, it's specifically used more for emergencies.
Okay.
But you can go on the website, it's under.
Everybody listen.
Yeah, it's on the homepage right now, it's on the very, it's smack dab in the middle of the homepage, Code Red.
Thank you, I didn't even know about that. But I mean, that was a good suggestion about the cellphones. Amber Alerts, everything like that comes across, but I don't even know half them people.
So go on, sign up for Code Red.
Thank you.
All right. Next person who has signed up for public comment is Stephanie Rosenwing.
Hi, my name's Stephanie Rosenwing, I live off of Piedmont Avenue. I, quite frankly, I can't believe I'm here again today to talk about this. I still fail to understand why we're talking about a sanctuary city for the unborn or legislation that would make this hard for a gynecologist to open up a practice here. I don't know why this continues to be an issue. I'm extraordinarily concerned that, that some type of legislation may be passed. I have a daughter and granddaughter. Abortion care, whether you like it or not, is in the general scope of gynecology. When we talk about making this a sanctuary city for the unborn, I mean, you're telling doctors graduating OB-GYNs at ETSU residence that you don't want them here. That's extraordinarily scary for me as a woman and a mom and a grandmother of females. I mean, we need to talk about pregnant people, they, they deserve healthcare. But I don't, I don't know what's going on with this, and it, it just feels like this thing hanging over our heads. So I'm going to continue to come here and I'm going to continue to speak out until I figure out what's going on, why these Texans are coming up here, why they're bringing people that, like some lawyer that wrote SBA, Bounty Hunter Bill in Texas, Texas. And I, last meeting, we talked about that. Virginia's better than Texas. Let's not be like Texas. We're better than that. Again, is it going to eliminate access to gynecological care? Because it's absolutely in the general scope of gynecological care. How can we let these grifters write legislation for our city? I don't understand what's going on. I don't know who is going to bring this legislation forward. I don't know, is it going to be published? Are we going to have a chance to vote? I mean, we all got to vote about the casino. I don't, I don't like it when rules are brought forward undercover. I want full notice. I, I want to know when this is going to pass. I may put my house on the market. I may look for somewhere safe for my daughter and my granddaughter. If you can't protect my daughter and granddaughter and give them the right to have gynecological care, then we'll leave. I mean, you seriously need to understand, you can't make abortion go away. You can drive it underground, and you can make it really unsafe for, for pregnant folks. And that's what's going to happen. I'm really tired of these Texans and these grifters that come up here and tell me how I need to live. We are so much more educated and so much more advanced than the state of Texas, and I gave those statistics last time I was here. And, and my biggest thing is every time I come here, I feel like it's church. If these Christians want to pick a sin, let's make this, let's, let's pick adultery. This needs to be a sanctuary city for holy matrimony. And I'm going to hire a lawyer, and I'm going to make that legislation happen. Let's talk about gamblers, former gambling addicts. I'm going to make this a sanctuary city for that. So we're going to shut down the casino. What about alcoholics? I'm going to hire me a lawyer, and I'm going to make this a sanctuary city for the sober. I'm going to shut down all the bars and restaurants. I mean, this is obscene and absurd. Thank you.
Thank you. Final person for non-agenda public comment is Chris Weatherford.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Chris Weatherford, I live on Island Road in Bristol, Virginia. Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak to you all again. I can go on and on about how the abortion has been around since the beginning of time, and it will never end. It will simply go back underground. And if any of you were an adult back in the day, before Roe, maybe this wouldn't even be considered because you would remember the people dying. You would remember the hospitals being clogged up with pregnant persons, seeking emergency care for unwanted pregnancies that they have gone the route without any safe and legal option available to them. They actually used to have septic wards. They were full to capacity often, and they were due to unsafe removals of unwanted pregnancies. I for one refuse to go back to that time. Simply because abortion is not something you would do does not mean that you get to decide that for someone else. In general, I trust people. I, I know I have no right to butt into another person's life and their family planning. It's literally none of my business. Science and religion are never going to agree on when life begins, but we must decide how we want our government to govern people's lives. More than 90% of abortions are performed during the first 10 weeks, so these laws give the 10-week-old fetus more rights than the human being already living and breathing on this earth. That's insanity. I want you to think seriously about that for a minute. A pregnant person is not in need of your guidance or control, they are capable of making decisions about their own life. Most abortions are for persons that already have children and a partner. These people have families that are living and breathing that they need to take their time, care, and financial support among all the other things that we do for each other as a family. They don't need your approval. They don't need some clinic sidewalk preacher to tell them that they are going to hell or will burn for eternity because they made a choice that you don't agree with. I've literally never seen a Jewish person protesting the bacon available at Food City. Your religious beliefs are personal, and that's where they end. Trying to outlaw abortion in the city of Bristol goes against the laws of the Commonwealth of Virginia. The amount of lawsuits that I can see coming down the pipeline because of such an ordinance are astronomical, not to mention the logistics of trying to enforce such a law. Please concentrate on the real issues affecting Bristolians, such as the dump, the homeless population, our children's education, and the many other areas that government helps its community. Simply put, if you don't believe in abortion, don't get one. It's not forced upon anyone, and this council knows that its citizens have had access to abortion in this area for over 40 years, and it hasn't been until recently that out-of-town influences have made us a target. We are good people, and we don't need to control others. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, thank you. That was the last person signed up for non-agenda public comment, so we'll move to adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve, we adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
All right. Motion by Mr. Farnham, second by Mr. Holmes. Please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes. And I'll note for the record, now that we've taken an action item vote, Vice Mayor Nave is out of town, and she's not able to join us this evening, as you may have figured out. All right. Item one on the regular agenda. Resolution in support of the Community Remembrance Project and acknowledging with profound regret the existence and acceptance of lynching within the Commonwealth of Virginia. Before we move into public comment, I'll just, I'll give a little note. So we have, we have two people who have signed up. I'm going to have one person speak in the public comment section, and then one of the organizers will actually speak after we do the reading of the resolution. So a person signed up for public comment is Reverend Ward.
Good evening. Name is Reverend Ward, representing the city of members in Bristol, Virginia. I feel the hope against my bark and the weight within my grain. I feel it in the throw of my own with the touch of my own last pain. But ever ne'er more I feel I am burned with dread. I am dried and dead from the curse of a guiltless man. But my branches still tell the story, and the story is still near that whoever finds me will find his truth and know that love lived here. I want to thank each and every one of you for taking the opportunity to go and accept the resolution that was presented, so that the stories that were told is not just a story for just one set of people, but for an American people, for not someone to feel guiltless or guilty, but one that we can see how far that we've come, and that we can actually be not just a great place to live, but a great place to really love by really showing that each child, whether monetized or whether their lives mattered or whether their lives are just different from others, it let us know that even if I'm monetized, even if the color of my skin matters, my history of who I am makes us who we are, but our history tells us our truth. So thank you for letting the tree speak and our people raise our face, and thank you as a community for allowing us to speak our truth. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We'll, we'll save our other person for after we read the resolution. Staff report.
In 2019, Virginia House Joint Resolution Number 655 was passed unanimously, acknowledging terror of lynchings in the Commonwealth of Virginia, and encourages localities to partner with the Equal Justice Initiative to take the necessary steps to commemorate and recognize this traumatic time in history. The Bristol Community Remembrance Project Coalition is prepared to begin this process by working with EJI and the Bristol community to memorialize Robert Clark, who was lynched in Bristol, Virginia in June of 1891, and bring education and awareness to this traumatic era of racial terror. This resolution of support will be submitted to the EJI, demonstrating the city's commitment to acknowledge Virginia House Joint Resolution Number 655 and take steps to recognize this traumatic time in Bristol's history and the history of America.
All right, thank you very much. Reading the resolution, I'm going to read it. You know, it's, it's a little bit wordy, but there's a lot of important information in here, so. A resolution in support of the Community Remembrance Project and acknowledging with profound regret the existence and acceptance of lynching within the Commonwealth of Virginia. Whereas the year 2019 marked the 400th anniversary of the arrival, of the arrival to Jamestown Settlement with first Africans in what would become the United States, where they were enslaved, marking the beginning of nearly 250 years of slavery in the British colonies and in the New Nation. And whereas throughout America's history of slavery, segregation, and inequality, thousands of African-Americans were lynched across America, particularly throughout the southern United States to perpetuate racial inequality and white supremacy and to terrorize African-American communities. And whereas during Reconstruction, the 13th, 14th, and 15th Amendments to the United States Constitution were ratified, abolishing slavery, granting citizenship to any person born or naturalized in the United States, and guaranteeing the rights of due process of law and equal protection under the law, and the right to vote for African-American men. And whereas, in outright defiance of the Reconstruction Amendments, people across the nation acted outside the law deliberately, violently, and brutally against African-American citizens in retribution for alleged or invented crimes and faced few or no consequences. And whereas the Equal Justice Initiative has documented more than 6,000 lynchings that took place throughout the South between 1865 and 1950. And whereas African-American men, women, and children lived in fear for their lives and the lives of loved ones could end violently at any time and in any place. And whereas the Richmond Planet editor John Mitchell Jr. exposed lynchings in Virginia as they occurred and led the state's anti-lynching campaign. However, despite his efforts and other accounts, historians believe still more lynchings remain undocumented. And whereas the legacy of racism that outlived slavery enabled the rise and acceptance of lynching facilitated segregation and disenfranchisement, and denied education and civil rights to African-Americans has yet to be uprooted in Virginia, the South, and the nation. And this dark and shameful chapter of American history must be understood, acknowledged, and fully documented, and the seemingly irreparable breach mended. And whereas the most abject apology for past wrongs cannot right them, yet the spirit of true repentance on behalf of a government and through it, a people can promote reconciliation and healing, and avert the repetition of past wrongs and the disregard of manifested justices. And whereas in 2010, the Equal Justice Initiative began investigating thousands of racial terror lynchings in the American South in an effort to understand the terror and trauma this sanctioned violence against the African, African-American community created, resulting in the report, "Lynching in America," confronting the legacy of racial terror in 2015, and the opening of the Memorial for Peace and Justice on April 26, 2018, as the nation's first memorial dedicated to the legacy of enslaved black people, people terrorized by lynching, African-Americans humiliated by racial segregation and Jim Crow, and people of color burdened with contemporary presumptions of guilt and police violence. And whereas the Equal Justice Initiative created the Community Remembrance Project to create greater awareness and understanding about racial terror lynchings and to begin a necessary conversation that advances truth and reconciliation by working with communities to commemorate and recognize the traumatic era of lynchings, by collecting soil from lynching sites across the country and erecting historical markers and monuments in these spaces. And whereas the General Assembly established the Virginia Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Memorial Commission in 1992 to continue the work of Dr. King, himself a victim of violence, as he sought to revitalize his, to realize his dream of a beloved community in which love, peace, and justice prevail over hatred and fear. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Bristol, Virginia joins the Virginia General Assembly and communities across the Commonwealth to hereby acknowledge with profound regret the existence and acceptance of lynching within the Commonwealth, and call for reconciliation among all Virginians. And be it further resolved by the city of Bristol, Virginia, that the Commonwealth's Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Memorial Commission make as a complete record as possible of each documenting lynching that occurred in the Commonwealth of Virginia, including the names of the victims and the locations and circumstances of each occurrence to be preserved on the commission's website, and develop programming to bring awareness and recognition of this history to communities across the state, that such awareness might contribute to the process of healing and reconciliation in Virginia's still wounded communities, and for families and descendants affected by lynchings. And be it further resolved that the city of Bristol, Virginia, recognize the effort of the Virginia General Assembly and other communities across the Commonwealth in concert with the Virginia Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Memorial Commission and the Department of Historic Resources in identifying historical marker sites, and support the site for an historical marker to recognize the documented lynching of Robert Clark in June 1891, and assist the Equal Justice Initiative in its Community Remembrance Project in the Commonwealth. And be it finally resolved that the clerk of the city of Bristol, Virginia, transmit a copy of this resolution to the Virginia Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Memorial Commission, requesting that it further disseminate copies of the resolution to their respective constituents so that they may be apprised of the sense of the city of Bristol, Virginia in this matter. So that is the reading of the resolution. I'm looking for a motion and a second to take action.
So move. Second.
All right. Motion by Mr. Pollard, second by Mr. Holmes. Ms. McDaniel, if you'd like to.
Thank you so much. On behalf of the Bristol Community Remembrance Project Coalition, I'd like to thank you, Mayor Osborne. Thank you, city council members. Thank you, city manager, for your support of this effort. I'll just reiterate the goals of our project, and it's to bring awareness and memorialize the June 1891 lynching of Robert Clark in Bristol, Virginia. It's also to identify ways to foster meaningful education, dialogue, and interactions that lead to truth, healing, and community growth. We cannot heal until we reveal. Bring awareness to historical and cultural trauma and impacts on individuals, organizations, and communities. So our next step is to complete the Equal Justice Initiative application. So, our next step is to complete the Equal Justice Initiative application, so this resolution will be included as part of that process. And then we'll be working with you going forward. Once we hear back from the Equal Justice Initiative on the application process, we'll identify the lynching site and then work with the City of Bristol, Virginia, so that we can erect a historical marker. So, thank you so much. Again, I say, we cannot heal until we reveal. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'll move into council discussion. Well, I'll just say, thank you to Ms. McDaniel and your organization for bringing this to our attention, you know, and for giving us the opportunity to do this. You know, this is... You tend to think of segregation, lynching, Jim Crow, you tend to think of that a lot of times as ancient history, but it's not that ancient a history. You know, this lynching in Bristol happened in 1891. I've got a picture in a photo album of my great uncle, me and my great uncle, who was born in 1890. You know, he was very old when I was born, but, you know, he was, he was born, he was alive when this happened. You know, this is not something hundreds of years ago. This is in the past century and a few years, so, you know, it's important to remember where you've been so you can avoid it when you go on forward. So, I appreciate the work you all have done on this, and, you know, I look forward to working with you more once you get with EJI and get a memorial established for it. If there's no further discussion, if the clerk will call the roll, please.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes. If you'd like to come down, I'll give you your resolution. All right. So, before we jump into our next two items, I just want to clarify, so we have several people who have signed up for Agenda Item Budget. So, Items Two and Three are both budget-related for '23, '24. Can I assume you all want to speak on the first item for the budget? I'll call your name, and if you don't, if you want to wait till Item Four, that's fine. So, Item Three, or Item Two, Public Hearing for Proposed FY 2023/2024 Budget. I'll open the public hearing. First person for public comment is Mr. Nupp.
So, before we jump into our next two items, I just want to clarify, so we have several people who have signed up for Agenda Item Budget. So, Items Two and Three are both budget-related for '23, '24. Can I assume you all want to speak on the first item for the budget? I'll call your name, and if you don't, if you want to wait till Item Four, that's fine. So, Item Three, or Item Two, Public Hearing for Proposed FY 2023/2024 Budget.
I'll open the public hearing. First person for public comment is Mr. Nupp.
All right. I don't know which one this is, okay? But anyways, I know you guys have got a big budget, order on your list. I'm asking, I've had a lot of citizens ask this, on the trash pickup, okay? And I know we need the money, but what I would like to see, and a lot of people that I've talked to would like to see, is wait and see what kind of money that we get on our funding. We hope and pray that we get some other steps taken here on the funding. Just don't throw this out here, man. Our citizens are broken a little bit on this. Well, a little bit, a lot. We took and swallowed the 5% on real estate, all right? Food tax, forcing a lot of people to go somewhere else and eat. The motel tax, I know there's a lot of people stay here, and that's fine, but consider holding off on this for a while. Let's see what kind of monies that we get in here on this funding. That's all I have to say on that part. I got a question to ask, and it's not on the budget or anything like that, and it might have been brought up here before. Bristol, Virginia operated the landfill as a business. Am I correct? Okay. I had a business for a long, long time, a trucking business. Did Bristol, Virginia have a liability insurance on something that would happen, a disaster that would occur? Because I did back in the day. It's been 20-plus years since I've had my business. But before I took one of my trucks out on the road, I had to have a million-dollar policy. And if I hauled somewhere for a government, city, or something like that, I had to have an umbrella policy. I'm asking if you guys had an insurance company, and if we could fall back on some of that? And I don't know how much money we got set aside for the closing, 25 years' worth, I hope. We'll see on that. But I think that's a good question, because I've never heard that brought up. Neil, Randy, all of yous, you guys know what's happening here, and I hope I can get an answer on this. Somebody said, "Well, what if it goes back on the insurance company? Could it break them up?" Who gives a rat's ass? It's breaking us up. All right, maybe somebody can bail out the insurance company. We need our city. We're proud of our city. We need money, and I know it's coming up for discussion. But I hope I can hear an answer back on the insurance situation anyways. Thank you, guys. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Would you like to address that?
Yeah. So, first, we did hear back from the federal government. The federal government has turned down our request for our $53 million.
Can we go back at it again?
And there's only one way to do it, and that's through congressionally-directed spending, and they've already turned it down. So, this is the second year in a row it's been turned down. As far as insurance goes, insurance will not cover capital expenditures like we have at the landfill. And then your third question was, oh, what was your third comment? You wanted insurance, wanted to know about wait on federal funding or wait on funding to say?
Wait on more funding, because our spirits are broken around here.
Right. So, we've already heard back from the feds, and they're not going to fund it. The state, we have no idea if and when they will fund anything.
Can we go to somebody else? Can we keep making noise about it?
I mean, you know, the community can make as much noise as you want to make. I mean, you know, we're reaching out to all avenues to get some sort of funding for this landfill.
I know you dredged out.
It's, you know, we're just running up against a brick wall, it seems like.
Them walls can be pushed down. We pushed down walls before.
And, well, I'm all for the community doing whatever they want to do to help with this. It's just a matter of whether or not legislatures at the federal and state level believe that this is a serious enough situation that they should step in.
It is a serious enough situation. It is an environmental disaster, and they need to see this. And I want to say something to this lady back here. It's just not the landfill. It's everything. The city's got a lot going on here. They're listening to everybody. But thank you again.
Thank you. And, you know, I'll just say to you very briefly, you know, in regards to federal funding, like you said, walls can be pushed down, but it does help to talk to the people with the biggest bulldozers to push it down, you know, at that level. You know, because we can, we as five people, and Randy makes six, can, you know, make as many requests as we want, but, you know, sometimes you got to get noisy, is all I'll say very, you know, broadly.
We've been noisy. We may have, well, I'm not going to speak yet, but I could run a dozer. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next person who has signed up for the budget is Kevin France.
Excuse me, I've had a deep breath, so I'm not walking that great right now. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for allowing me to be here. I'm Kevin France. I live at 2100 Osborne Street. Golly, Randy, did you know several years ago you was going to walk into all this?
No, I did not.
But anyway, I want to tell you just a little something briefly. I was on city council from 1988 to 1992. David McGee remembers this. He's probably been around here as long as I have, it's tough. But we had a problem with the wastewater treatment plant, and it was a joint-operated facility of different areas, not like the landfill, which, by the way, I can tell you on this end of town, good gosh, it's awful. But everything we flushed was floating down Boone Lake. It was to the point that all the localities, Bristol, Tennessee, Bristol, Virginia, I believe Washington County was involved, anybody that flushed their toilets and their toilets went in to the wastewater treatment plant down on Beaver Creek were sued. And the courts ruled that everyone that contributed to the wastewater treatment, the wastewater, was responsible. And we paid out back then an astronomical sum of money over quite a number of years. So did Bristol, Tennessee. So did Sullivan County. So did everyone else. And this is just a question. Are, were our localities that were utilizing the landfill, were they, Randy, were they customers, or were they contracted in as localities to provide that?
I guess the best way to answer that is they had contracts with the city that they were allowed to dump their waste in our landfill.
Okay. I just wonder some responsibility there, because everyone contributed to it. You know, we were looking back at the wastewater treatment plant, well, we couldn't help it because it overflowed. It was in Bristol, Tennessee. But we were flushing our toilets, and ladies and gentlemen, I'll just be quite honest with you, it was poop that was going down Boone Lake. And like I said, we paid millions upon millions of dollars to have that cleaned up. Just something to consider. I wouldn't be in your spot for a million dollars right now. Well, I could be, but no. But anyway, my wife and I looked at our budget, and the property tax increase, that's okay. But when you're looking at over $400 a year being put on waste collection, yeah, that's a problem. That means my wife and I would have to adjust our budgets, but what about people in Bristol that live on fixed incomes? People in this neighborhood right here? People in other neighborhoods? Because I understand it's a fee that everybody's charged. It's not a tax, it's a fee. And how are they going to do it? What are they going to decide to do? Are they going to decide, "I can't buy groceries this week? I can't get my medicine? Because I'm going to have to pay more for my trash to be picked up." All I'm asking is, and Randy, I know your plate's full, but all I'm asking is, please, guys, consider, just like Mr. Nupp said, if we can just take a pause and see what we can get, let's go there. Let's be reasonable in our thinking, and let's think about like when the wastewater treatment plant fiasco happened, and trust me, it was a fiasco. Yeah, I felt sorry for the people that lived around Boone Lake. It was awful. And it's just like right now. I mean, the smell is on this end of town. I don't know how people stood it. But we need to think of reasonable ways to fix something that should have never happened in the first place. And so, please, I just ask for your help. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next person who has signed up for a budget item, I don't know how to pronounce your last name, your first name is Monica.
I know everybody tries to say my name, and it is just the way it looks, daddy-o. Okay. I might have a little bit extra information here. I've talked to the governor's office, and today I was directed to the Nat, National, let me get my notes here, okay? National Natural Resources Department of Virginia. And I spoke with the man there, Travis Voight, and he said that he's fully aware of the problem that's going on and that they are considering helping us with funding. So, again, like the previous people had mentioned, I think that we should wait and see what kind of help we get, whether we get a lot, a little, but it shouldn't be on the residents right now, because everybody, mostly everybody, is on a fixed income in this area. So, it's going to be very, very tough for everybody to make that $400 and something dollars extra a year in payments. So, he sounded very hopeful that, you know, they could work it into their budget and that we could get some kind of funding, whether it's some or all. But again, we just need to wait and see. So, I agree with the other two people that spoke. We need to wait and see what happens. And the department there was Natural Resources Department of Virginia, and the governor's office gave me that department. So, they are aware of what's going on in the state. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just for, just for everybody's information, I have met with the Secretary of Finance and some folks from the Department of Natural Resources as well. So, we have had those discussions, and ultimately, at this point, it's up to legislatures as to whether or not there's going to be a budget this year. If there's no budget this year, there's really no mechanism for them to fund money to us prior to June 30th or after July 1st.
All right. Last person signed up for public comment on the budget is Ms. Leonard.
My name is Alice Leonard, and I live at 251 Fuller Street, Bristol, Virginia. And just about everything's been said about this trash pickup. But, you know, I want to thank the city of, I think the city of Bristol has suffered enough going through the toxic smell, not being able to go outside and do yard work without getting sick or even having family functions. My kids are from Knoxville, and they don't, they won't come here and stay because I'm in the heart of this mess. I'm asking the city of Bristol to reconsider not to increase residential trash collection fees. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. That is the last person who signed up for public comment, so I'm going to move to staff reporting.
Yes. And counsel, I would remind each and every one of you, plus members of the public that have talked tonight, by law, we have to have a balanced budget. So, having an unbalanced budget on June 30th is not appropriate under state law. So, tonight is the public hearing for the proposed fiscal year 2023/2024 budget pursuant to Section, our Virginia Code, Section 15.2 hyphen 2506. The notice of public hearing for the proposed fiscal year 2023/2024 budget was published in the Bristol Herald-Coolier on Sunday, April 16, 2023. And in that notice, you can see how each, how the general fund and other funds would be spent for this upcoming fiscal year.
All right. Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. And just a note for the people watching, so during a public hearing, we just listen, and we'll get to discussion at a different point. Next item is public hearing for FY 2023/2024 Budget Appropriation Ordinance. I will open the public hearing. Everybody who signed up for public comment spoke on Item Two. Staff report.
Counsel pursuant to Section 10.04 of the City Code of Bristol, Virginia, counsel will hold at least one public hearing on the appropriation ordinance, which is attached in your packet. The notice of public hearing for the fiscal year 2023/24 Budget Appropriation Ordinance was published in the Bristol Herald-Coolier on Sunday, April 16, 2023.
All right. We'll close the public hearing. Item Four, Budget Amendment slash Supplemental Budget Appropriation, totaling $995,845. Staff report.
Counsel, on May 24 of 2022, you adopted the FY 2022/23 budget. The amendment before you will allow us to increase that budget by $995,845, and that breaks down as follows. The general fund would get an additional $960,845. We need to appropriate an additional $750,000 from the beginning fund balance to take care of additional legal fees that we are incurring. There are a number of other items that are what I would call housekeeping items, where we have received additional monies from various sources. The Judicial Circuit Court clerk for the 28th District would, and as far, and also the General District Court have additional court fees. These are bond monies that they have to refund to the bonding company, so that just does the, makes the budget whole for those items. The Police Department has received additional donations and reimbursements for different equipment items and to cover... for different equipment items and to cover salary and wage overtime. The sheriff's department has also received some reimbursements to cover additional expenses for state travel where they have to take inmates, um, to different locations. They also received reimbursement for some overtime. Each year when we put the budget together, because we don't have the final figures, we have to estimate our contribution to the Southwest Virginia Regional Jail Authority. So in finalizing the figures for the year, they identified that we needed to provide an additional $85,838 as our share of the joint operating expense. As you know, since the landfill closed, we're having to take the trash to a different location, which has cost the city additional monies. So we are needing to increase our tipping fees, uh, budget by $100,000 and that would come from beginning fund balance. We have received an additional $4,500 from the state for litter control grant. Those monies are going to the Keep Bristol Beautiful folks so that they can spend those uh, for the litter prevention and recycling program as well as the extended polystyrene campaign, $4,500. And we also receive some ARPA funds from the Virginia Tourism Corporation. And Discover Bristol is gonna take care of making sure that those funds get spent appropriately. That's additional federal revenue of $35,000. So the, um, the $35,000 is actually not part of the general fund. That would be part of our separate COVID-19 slash ARPA federal funds. So that's an overview of the budget amendment.
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, looking for a motion in a second to take action on the supplemental appropriation.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve this supplemental budget appropriation as presented.
Second.
All right. Motion by Mr. Farnham, second by Mr. Holmes. Counsel discussion.
The vast majority of this is legal fees. Everything else totals together to 25,000. It's small stuff. Most of it, we have no option on.
Vast majority is certainly legal fees and, you know, hopefully that is something now going forward, we will not see a lot more of. I do have a question on the 35,000 COVID funds that'll go to, believe, or go to Discover Bristol. So essentially it's just a, it's a pass through.
That's a pass through. That was something that we applied for sometime. I think those funds became available last summer and Discover Bristol applied for it. I think we got the final application in in February and we were just awarded those funds recently.
And so this is a, this is a fund that, uh, there's an amount of money that will go to the CBB. So they would have until June 30th of, of the fiscal year to spend it, correct?
Uh, no, I think they can expend it after that. It's on a reimbursement basis if I'm not mistaken.
Okay. So it probably operates off the federal budget cycle?
Well, I don't think it's operating on a budget cycle. I think it's on a reimbursement basis. So they have to show that they've expended the funds and then they get reimbursed for it.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. If the clerk would call the roll, please.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes. Uh, before we jump into item five, I'm going to take a 10-minute recess. All right. Uh, we are back after that brief commercial break. Item five is considered trade-in of golf cart fleet and acquisition of new golf carts for Clear Creek Golf Club. Uh, no one signed up for public comment. Does anyone have public comment on it? Yes. Staff report will tell us about that. Staff report.
Counsel, the current fleet of golf carts, which totaled 65 at Clear Creek Golf Club, were acquired in 2019 via a lease purchase arrangement. We have paid off that lease purchase and those golf carts are in need of being replaced as several of them are in a state of disrepair. Uh, the carts were acquired through a club car distributor, Motive Power, through their connection with Omnia Partners, which is the largest purchasing organization for public sector procurement. Club car assists local governments in reaping the buying power advantages of participating in a collective buying network. So as I said, the current fleet needs replacing due to age and wear and tear. City staff request approval to trade in the current fleet of 65 carts with a trade-in value collectively of $110,500 for 65 new golf carts and a new range cart. After trade-in, the acquisition price would be $235,283 utilizing Omnia Partners Collective Buying Network. They are set up through state purchasing networks. So this item is just to allow us to trade in the current fleet uh, toward the acquisition of the new golf carts. We do charge fees at the golf course to cover these purchase costs. So those fees will be collected over the court, you know, they're collected every time someone uses golf carts.
Okay. Uh, looking for a motion in a second to take action on this.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pollard, second by Mr. Farnham, for, for background. So if anyone doesn't know, so the city, the city owns the golf course. It, for a very long time, it was, it was not self-sustaining, but over the past, I'm gonna say, four or five years, you know, it's, it's broken even or it's, it's made a little bit of money every year. So it, it is paying for itself currently. Um, and the, um, golf carts are one of those things that's recommended to be replaced about every three or four years. And this is, it's just something that we regularly do. Um, is there any other discussion on it?
I was just gonna say, I remember we did this about four years ago. I just got on the council and, um, you know, I think there were a lot of questions about why does the city own a golf course? And, and they started doing a membership drive, I feel like, a few, few years ago. And, and that really has increased a lot of the folks who play out there. And, um, Casey and, and the crew out there, they do a great job at, at, at managing that. And, um, so yeah, it's, it's, um, not something every city has, but, um, I'm glad that it's, uh, it's, it is self-sustaining and it's actually, um, you know, in the black. So.
You know, yeah, I'll just, I'll follow up with, you know, what Councilman Farnham said, that, um, you know, Casey and, you know, our, our manager out there, I think he's a, he's a PGA certified golf course manager, so he is, he is eminently qualified to do what he does. And, and really those, those membership drives that, that came about, I guess, in 2019, you know, really changed the, changed the outlook for the golf course. There were, there were discussions when I was first sworn in. I think within the first week or two of me being in office, you know, we had people saying, hey, let's sell the golf course. Let's get out of it. You know, and, and we had no guarantee at the time, you know, what would happen to the golf course. And a lot of people who lived near it had a lot of concerns with, you know, the, the quality of the product that they purchased a $400,000 house next to. So, you know, it is, it is a testament to, that membership drive into Casey's leadership up there that the golf course is turning a profit and is, uh, is self-sustaining now. And, uh, and part of that is regular maintenance of, of, uh, capital costs. So. Uh, if there's no further counsel discussion?
In the, in the past, I have agreed with those people who said that we need to get rid of it. And in general, I would agree that it's not something that's a city obligation. Um, on the other hand, we have, advisedly or not, we have made certain commitments. And we have some neighbors in that area who, as you indicated, they paid a lot for their homes based on there being a golf course adjacent to it and a well-managed golf course. Fortunately, in recent years, Casey Barnes has done an excellent job managing it and he has actually made that golf course start turning a profit. It is one of the very few things that this city does that actually makes money. Of course, the government's not, it's supposed to make money, so that's, that's fine. It looks like they've gotten an excellent price on these, uh, carts. Um, I did some looking online and it looks like I'm seeing some 2019 models for over $8,000 used and we're getting current model year cars for about $5,000 each. So it looks like he's done an excellent job at, at finding a great option. And since he's tasked with handling that place the best he can and make it, uh, a budget positive, it looks like he's doing a great job, in my opinion.
The, the concern, I'll, I'll address that briefly, that the concern that that would have, would raise would be the same now as it was in 2018 when, uh, when I first came in and, and someone came and pitched that proposal. All of a sudden you lose any type of, you know, control over the quality of the product that, that they're presenting. And when you couple that with the fact that, you know, it looked like the price would not have been, it would not have been advantageous for us to, to make that decision at that point. It, it would not, in the long run, be something that would be good for the people who live. Because, you know, there, it is in the city. It's, it's kind of an island unto itself. Those are people who live in the city, so. No, no, no. I mean, you know, the golf course is self-sustaining and making money. So I mean, you know, if it's, if it's generating its own revenue to cover the cost of itself, you know, plus a little bit more, plus it's making the people who live, who've made a large financial investment there, you know, make them, you know, feel good about the city and, and have something that they enjoy and they're, they're paying for. No, I think it's, I think it's good.
Um, concerning her specific question about selling it, if I recall correctly, none of the offers back when this was discussed, none of them actually wanted to buy it. They just wanted to take over management. In other words, it would not have improved our financial situation. Because they, they weren't going to pay us for it. They were just gonna take over management for it.
Hearing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes. Uh, item six, consider approval of the state and local government lease purchase agreement with the Lage-Landon DLL Public Finance LLC for financing Clear Creek Golf Carts, including approval for the city manager to sign related documents. Staff report.
Counsel, this item puts the funding mechanism in place to take care of paying for the golf carts that we're getting ready to purchase. Uh, we received a lease purchase proposal from Motive Power, the club car distributor, from which, uh, that's who we're buying the 65 replacement golf carts from. They proposed a 48-month term with monthly payments of roughly $5,600. And when I calculated the interest rate on that, it was an imputed rate of 6.69%. So I solicited DLL directly and they came in with payments totaling 60s. Those payments would total 67,209. When I solicited quotes directly from DLL, they gave me a 48-month option with monthly payments of a little over $5,500 with an imputed rate of 5.84%, significantly less than the one that we were quoted, uh, from Motive Power. Although they do, they do work together, they do partner together, but when I went straight to the source, I got a better quote. I did attempt to, uh, get a quote from our local bank. They had some, there were some people on vacation and so forth and they were not able to respond in a timely manner. So, um, payments on this plan would total 66,101 dollars on an annual basis, which is important to know because we have that covered, uh, adequate, more than adequately in the budget. So we would just ask that you allow us to move forward with the low rate of 5.84% from the quotes and that you would allow the city manager to sign any related documents that are related.
All righty. Thank you. Uh, looking for a motion in a second to take action on this.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the agreement as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Farnham, second by Mr. Holmes. Uh, counsel discussion. I'll just say, you know, thank you, Ms. Jennings, for, for your work on this and for being able to get out and, and get us a little bit of a better rate, which, you know, it, you know, going from 56 to 55 doesn't sound like a lot, but it adds up, you know, especially with, you know, with that type of volume. So, so I appreciate that. Hearing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes. Uh, next item, uh, closed session. Pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A1, Code of Virginia 1950 is amended. Discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body, parthetical personnel. Looking for a motion in a second.
Mr. Mayor, I move we move into closed session for the reasons stated.
Second.
All right. Motion from Mr. Farnham, second from Mr. Holmes. Please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes. Uh, we'll be back. All right. By roll, call, vote, council members certify that only business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as specified in the motion to convene an executive session were discussed. Please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion uh, that we, uh, will accept the city manager's recommendation to hire Ms. Tamara Spradlin as the assistant city manager.
Second.
All right. We have a motion by Mr. Farnham to hire Tamara Spradlin as assistant city manager and a second by Mr. Holmes. Uh, clerk, call the roll, please.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes. There being no further business, we stand adjourned.